All right, we will convene the Newport Beach Planning Commission for Thursday, June 9th, 2022, and we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Ketting will lead us tonight.
What allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we'll move on to the roll call.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
I think we're...
My apologies, all Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Klosmer, who's excused.
All right, thank you. All right, if my fellow Commissioners don't object, I would like to move item number eight, to move that up to discuss at this time, and that is, actually, I'm sorry, item number seven, which is report by Community Development Director, and I'd like to let Jim give his report and some comments.
Sure, sure. My report really consists of a thank you. Commissioner Ketting has been with us for eight years, and tonight is his last meeting, so we want to make sure he goes out with something, and we want to have some remarks here, but, you know, Commissioner Ketting, we've worked with you for over eight years, we understand that this is a very significant commitment of your time, and we want to acknowledge that. You've been to a lot of meetings, I didn't count up how many, but more than I could count, and you've been diligently reviewing these reports and asking very thoughtful and probing questions that kept us on our toes, and we appreciate that. So on behalf of staff, we want to thank you for your time served, you know, it is a significant commitment, we want to acknowledge that, as I said, and we've got a couple of gifts for you, and Amanda will get those too. There you go. All right. Well, can you open up the one that's right there in front of you, the taller one, that almost looks like a wine bag, but it's not a bottle of wine? It might look like a wine bag, but it's not.
Don't let our fellow colleague on the council get mad.
Well, thank you, thank you for your service.
Is there a way we could do a photo as a group, or is there something we could do over here?
We definitely can, so we had thought maybe to come down to the flag, if you like, or we can, you know, if you've got your family here with you, Commissioner?
They're at Susan's there.
Okay, so we thought maybe we'd come down and have some photographs real quick, we'll try to wrap this up, but we'll get to it quickly.
Yeah, I'd love to add, just in my time here now, now going on five years, just really appreciate all of fellow Commissioners' presence here and help, and in two terms as Chairman, I've learned a lot from him, and Materials Board, that was one thing that I appreciate, and actually, I use that in what I do in Colorado, that I make that a part of my presentations when I'm on the other side of the dais for my projects there, and Peter brought that example to me a number of years ago, and how important that is, and so that's just one little anecdotal story, but it's one that I actually use in my professional world because of what I learned.
And I want to chime in too, as probably, I guess I will be the most senior member after your departure, but we've served, I think I'm going on my seventh year as well, so I have learned a lot from you, and I've appreciated our back and forth, sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree, but we always can see eye to eye that we're here for the reason and for the city, and I want to thank your wife for allowing you to be a participant in this, because it is a dedication, you do have to step away from family, you do have to sit in front of this binder and study up on it, and you do study up, you do read, you do visit the sites, you do what the job is here to do, and you do it for the community. So I've appreciated you working as hard as you had, and you've taught me a lot of things, and I won't forget the experience that I've had with you up here.
Thank you very much, just as an aside, she's going to petition the council to get me back on, because she likes when I'm not around for two days a week. Do you have any other comments from Commissioner Curtis?
Yeah, I think the most that I'm going to miss is your wit, the wit, the jokes, the barks, the timely responses, it lightens things up when things get a little intense in here, and that certainly is a gift, and we're going to, I'm certainly going to miss that.
Thank you, Curtis. Definitely, I second that. Any comments down from you two?
Everybody already took all my goodies, I was going to say the same thing about the Materials Board, and certainly, as I already said before we started the meeting here, we're going to miss all the light-up accessories and all the holiday spectaculars. We definitely will be missing your presence here.
And I also wanted to say, you know, really, really appreciate you sharing your knowledge up here, time and time again, and then your wit and just some of the funniest things that you've ever seen.
Oh, no, it's supposed to be serious.
I loved the dog barking, that one really caught me off guard, and it's one of my favorite stories of all time.
Well, thank you very much, I just, the way I approached this all these years was to tackle it in a big way, and luckily for me, I had the time to do it, I studied every chapter, I went out and looked at every site that I could, and get by, and had questions. I challenge you all to challenge the staff when they put their great staff reports together, some of the finest I've ever seen in all my years in development in other cities, these are very good, but challenge them, call them up, if you don't agree, have them defend it, try to iron those things out before we get in here, but if not, go after it, challenge each other, it's all for the betterment of the community, and if we can get a better project out of an applicant, let's do it. A lot of us have been on that side of the dais, and we nod approval, okay, you want that, all right, I'll do it, type thing, but I think it's a special place up here, and the community trusts us, and we try to carry on the goals of the council and the city. Thank you so much. And Jim, if there's any other business related, in terms of your comments, maybe we just wait to the end, or is that normal?
I can complete my report here real quick.
Okay.
Just a reminder, we do not have a meeting on the 23rd, it's canceled, our next meeting will be July 7th, that'll be our annual meeting, where we will do our annual business to elect a new Chairman, a Vice Chairman, and Secretary, and we have three other items on that agenda, so we will see you again on July 7th. I won't be here on July 7th, but Mr. Jurgis will be here, and Yolanda hopefully will be here, I think you're here, okay? So, very good. Anyway, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go back to our regular agenda here, and go to Section Four, Public Comments. The public comments on this section is any public comments that, for an item that is not on the agenda tonight, so for any non-agenda items, public is free to come and speak now, if they like. Open it, see none, we'll go ahead and move forward, move to the next section, Five, which will be the request for continuances.
Mr. Chair, I do want to make one announcement, and that relates to item number eight, and that is, no, it's not item eight, item number five, I'm sorry, and that's the study session item this evening. Mr. Murillo, who is our expert on ADUs, who's preparing this ordinance, was not available this evening, I apologize, we wanted to go do a study session on that, without Mr. Murillo here, we really can't do that justice, so what we're going to do is postpone that particular item to a future date, and obviously, to the next Planning Commission will bring that forward, so my hope is tonight we won't be discussing that item, and we'll just reschedule it for a future meeting.
All right, thank you.
And that's the only item for change, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to consent items, and we'll start with item number one, which are the minutes of May 26, 2022. Any motions? I'll make a motion for approval and include Mr. Mosher's comments.
I'll second.
And there's one more comment, all these years, is thanking Jim Mosher for showing up, finding the semicolons in the wrong place, and the misspellings, I think it's wonderful, and, you know, a lot of people don't want to go to that effort, but I thanked you for that, I thanked you for your research on items that, you know, sometimes went over our heads, but appreciate it, keep it up to some extent.
The motion carries 5-0 with Commissioner Rosine abstaining.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number two under our consent items, and that's the Phillips Encroachment, PA 2022-064, this is just recommended action to approve and file, since it's under consent. Is there anyone that would like to speak from the audience, although it's not from a public meeting here, but if anybody would like to have a comment on this item, they're free to at this time. Mosher?
Thank you, Chair Lowry, and members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I noticed in the staff report that the area, that this is a request for an encroachment permit on Fullerton Avenue, I noticed the area where the encroachments are is referred to in the staff report as a parkway, and I wanted to point out to you, I realize this is out of your control, since the City Council has assigned to the Planning Commission the review and approval of these applications, but in our city charter, it actually says that there is another commission in Newport Beach called the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, whose duty is to advise the City Council on all matters having to do with parkways, so it seems to me they are really the more appropriate body to be evaluating an application of this kind. But again, the City Council in its wisdom has ignored that provision of the charter and assigned the duty to you. As to the parkway improvements that you are being asked to approve, the only comment I have on it is it involves a block wall that is in this parkway, and I noticed from the photos, the block wall doesn't look like it's very tall, yet the resolution you're being asked to approve is, says it's for a one-foot-tall block wall, the photos look a little bit lower than that, so I'm just wondering, and it also refers to it as built as what's being approved, I hope it's clear, is it clear to you and the applicant that what you're approving is the wall as built, and you're not approving an invitation to build it higher to the full one foot that it says in the resolution? So, that is my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Looks like we don't have any, so we'll go ahead and close those comments, and then we will call if there's a motion up here for approval, or any comments before a motion? Are you on two?
Yes, item two under consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I can second that.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to our public hearing items, we'll move on to item number three, which is the Herring Residence Variance, PA 2022-008, and I believe Chelsea, you'll be speaking to this tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, good evening Commissioners, Chelsea Craigor with the Planning Division. The project before you is the Herring Residence Variance, it's located at 201 Crystal Avenue. Here I have a vicinity map, the project is, once again, at 201 Crystal Avenue, it's at the corner of Park Avenue and Crystal, and it's on Little Balboa Island, it's an existing single-family residence on a 1,500-square-foot lot, the lot's dimensions are 25 feet wide by 60 feet deep, you might be able to tell from the exhibit there that it's a smaller lot than a lot of the lots around it, standard lots in, on Balboa Island, Little Balboa Island and the larger Balboa Island are typically more 30 feet by 85 feet deep, and I'll get into that a little bit more later, but you have some of those lots visible in front of you here. The project was originally, or excuse me, the existing residence was originally constructed in 2008, at the time, it had the benefit of a variance for floor area and modifications to encroach into required setbacks due to the small size of the lot. The request of the variance is to construct an 84-square-foot cover over an existing outdoor kitchen on the roof deck, the variance is for an additional step-back that's required for third-floor structures, so third-floor area and third-floor covered decks, and there's no addition of floor area included with this request, it's just a cover over an outdoor kitchen. This is a floor plan of the roof deck, the area of work is in that green rectangle there, it is an existing kitchen, which you can see there, and this cover would go over just this 84-square-foot area. Some elevations from the front and the rear of the property, so the area of addition or of that covered area is circled in that dashed line, it's closed on, or closed in on one side, the other three sides are open. This exhibit really shows what the application in the variance is for, along the bottom of the exhibit are the required setbacks and step-backs per the zoning code, in this case, the requirement is a 20-foot front step-back, a 10-foot rear step-back, and then an additional 15 feet from the front and the rear for any third-floor covered structures. As previously mentioned, when this project was originally developed, it had the benefit of a modification for setbacks due to that very shallow lot depth of only 60 feet, in this case, it was approved with an actual front step-back of five feet. The proposed cover over the rooftop kitchen is over 16 feet back from the actual facade of the front of the building, the intent of these additional step-backs for third floors is to pull that massing on the third floor away from the front and the rear facades of the building, and in this case, the project is consistent with the intent of these development standards. I'll mention again that most of the lots on Balboa Island and Little Balboa Island are about 85 feet deep, and also typically have front setbacks of 10 feet or less, in this case, the project is 60 feet deep with a required front step-back of 20 feet. The project would be exempt from CEQA pursuant to Class 1 existing facilities, and staff's recommendation is approval of the project subject to conditions. This concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions if you have them, there's no applicant presentation, but Barry Walker is here representing the applicant, if you do have any questions for him.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this point, any of the Commissioners, and then over here? Question, staff or applicant, maybe both, I didn't see in the conditions of approval that this cannot be enclosed someday down the road. We speak of this in the, like on Balboa, and some of the other small-lot developments where they have that, stopped allowing that, otherwise it becomes a third-floor room.
I have some additional thoughts on that, it is a code requirement, but you can certainly add that as a condition or modify an existing condition to make sure that it's abundantly clear.
Thank you. Other questions for staff at this point? See none, then we'll go with ex parte communications, we'll start with Mark at the end.
None.
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 I did not.
All right, all right, we will start now with the public comments section of the hearing, and applicant, if they wanted to speak to anything specific, I know they didn't have a presentation, but does anyone up here have a question specifically for the applicant this time? If none, then we'll go ahead and just go straight to public comments, if any other person from the public?
Chair Lowry and members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher, first of all, I noticed that there was a, seemed to be a difference of opinion between the Planning Division and the architect for this site as to what is the front of the house, for planning purposes, the front is along Park Avenue, but when the architect shows the elevations, apparently Crystal Avenue is actually the front of the house, so he would apparently regard it as 60 feet wide by 25 feet deep rather than the other way around, which would make probably the setback problems even worse, but I don't think that's a problem. The comment I most want to make to you is that when I look at the aerial photo, which is on page two, it doesn't look like any of the houses along Park Avenue are observing this 20-foot set-back, and if that is true, I don't think it's very good policy to have a rule that nobody observes and everybody requires a modification or variance from, so you as a Planning Commission may be suggesting that there needs to be a review of the set-back requirements on Park Avenue, and that is my comment, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments to this item? Don't believe there are any, I will ask the applicant, though, do they agree with all the conditions that were in the resolution, if he's, just...
Yes, good evening, Barry Walker, and, you know, my client wouldn't have any problem with the conditions as proposed.
All right, thank you. All right, we do have one question from... Excuse me, Mr. Walker, what about the one I'm going to add about permanent enclosure around that room?
That wouldn't be a problem.
Very good, thank you. All right, seeing that we do not have any more public comments, we'll go ahead and close the public comments section, and we'll move it back up to the Commissioners, and if there's any questions, additional questions for staff, or any discussion amongst us, or motions, or any of that good stuff. Commissioner Rosine?
Maybe just a quick question of staff for Chelsea, this, the set map, does there, is there, has the setback map been updated for this area, and what does it say?
These properties along Park actually are not identified on the setback maps, and that's why the 20-foot front set-back applies.
Got it, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay.
Questions, but I'll make a motion to approve the Herring Residence Variance, PA 2022-0084, with the condition, additional condition of approval that Commissioner Ketting brought up, which would be, the applicant would not be able to enclose the structure.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to item number four, this is the 22nd Street Lofts, PA 2022-011, I believe Liz, is it Liz? Oh, I don't...
Chair Lowry?
Yes.
I'm standing in for Liz.
Okay, I was about to say, I didn't see her.
I'm going to be Deputy Director and Planner today, Liz is on vacation, her supervisor would be giving this presentation, but he's unavailable today, so that leaves it to me, so bear with me here, I'm familiar with the project, this is the 22nd Street Lofts, and so the project overview, it's the construction of a new three-story mixed-use development, where we have three commercial suites on the ground floor and three residential units above, two on the second level and one on the third level, so the project location is in the McFadden Square area near the Balboa Pier, the project site's highlighted here, and you can see the municipal parking lots surrounding that area for the pier and the beach, and areas comprised of a variety of commercial buildings that approach, you know, full lot coverage. This is another view of the vicinity, again, you see the parking lots, the municipal parking lots, and then the block, you know, Black East, 21 Oceanfront, District Lounge, and Taco Bell Cantina, and the project site is highlighted there. So what's there today, we have an existing non-conforming, single-family residence, this is a mixed-use zone residential, is only allowed on the first floor, this is just an older, non-conforming house, and then on the other lot, we have a commercial building and a mixed-use building with a unit on it, so these structures would be eliminated. Another thing I want to point out is we have nine-foot public alleys that front on the, I guess that's the south and east of the project site, and 22nd Street is on the northwest, if you will. This is the site plan, and it has shifted in orientation, 22nd Street is on the right-hand side, and those public alleys are on the top and the left-hand side, and so, just to orient you, the commercial suites, the three commercial suites are there in the orange color, we have some yellow area that is commercial parking, you can see that inset to the side of the building, and that's necessary so that you can maneuver into those spaces, because it is a very narrow alley, you see this internal staircase area in purple that takes you to the second and third floors, there's also an elevator, and then you see the blue areas, that's the residential parking, it does comply with our parking standards, and so that is there, and then we've got that green area at the top, now that is a communal parking structure, I'll talk about that in a moment here, and then there is a small shaded area at the top, which is on the alley, and that is a proposed easement that would be dedicated to enhance the maneuverability of that alley, as I said, it's nine feet wide and it'll be 11 feet. For the commercial component, as I indicated, we've got three suites on the ground floor that'll face the street, they're right on the street, there's no setbacks there, there's no landscaping there, and that is appropriate for this particular area, given how the area is developed, there is no set-back that's required for this building. So we have some bike racks, three suites, bathroom utility areas, and those glass storefronts. Up above, we've got two units, I'm sorry, three units, two on the second level and one on the third level, and you can see the sizes and their basic amenities listed. The entitlements, we have a site development review for the construction of this mixed-use building, it's also there to consider the increased height, the applicant is designing this building to take advantage of the secondary height limit that gets it up to 35 feet for sloped roofs, and I'll show you an exhibit of that in a moment, there's a conditional use permit to waive commercial parking, and we'll discuss that as well. You can't build a building like this in the coastal zone without a coastal development permit, so that's what's also in front of you this evening, it is in the appeal area. Parcel map to merge the lots, but also to create condominium units for the units to be individually sold. I'm bringing this up here, this is SB 478, this went into effect this year, and what this law does is it prohibits local governments from imposing a floor area limit of less than 1.0 for housing development projects that are three to seven units. This is really important, because our current general plan and our zoning for this property limits the FAR to .75, and so this is a state preemption, and the applicant is taking advantage of that this evening, they're constructing this building with basically a 1.0 FAR, and it would otherwise be allowed because of this particular law. So the height increase, so for flat roofs, this is a 26-foot, and all the flat roofs on this building do comply, the sloping roof elements, again, would otherwise be allowed to go to 31 feet, the proposed increase is to 35 feet, the elevator at 35.5 is an allowable exception in the zoning code and in our local coastal program, and in order to go to that higher height limit, you basically need to make findings that there's additional project amenities, enhanced architecture, you know, the scale and relationship with the increased height is actually appropriate to the area, and there's no more floor area than you'd otherwise achieve, you know, all those findings can be met even with the... Feel that all those findings can be met even with the state preemption for the floor area. And those findings that are, in fact, that support those are in the resolution. I want to go over a couple of those amenities and one, of course, is that two-foot alley easement dedicated to the city. So that would, it would expand the width of the alley and it's really important. If you've been down that alley, it's really hard to get your car down there and the buildings take some damage with people who don't quite navigate it very well. So this is very important. It also facilitates maneuver, the maneuvering into those commercial parking spaces that come off of this narrow alley. So increases the visibility, you get some increased maneuverability. And we do have a condition of approval that I'll talk about in a moment here, where that the corner of the building at this alley has a window through it. So you'll be able to see right through the storefront, through a window to see the cars so that it helps avoid an unfortunate circumstance where the car intersects with a pedestrian. We want to avoid that. So that's also a part of the project. So, you know, this is one of those amenities. The other amenity is that trash enclosure I mentioned. It's oversized. The minimum requirement is 32 feet. What they're proposing is 149 feet. And this is going to serve some surrounding buildings that the applicant owns. So we feel that this is actually a very nice public amenity, not a public amenity, but an amenity for the neighborhood. These other buildings really don't have areas for trash enclosures, given the age of these structures. It helps improve water quality and helps eliminate nuisance odors. And that's another amenity. Now, the increased height, the way that the house, the way it's designed, first of all, the building basically terraces back up into the center of the site around all four sides. It kind of steps as it goes higher. So that helps reduce the overall mass of the building. You know, we have the high-quality architecture with the materials. You know, as you look, this visual analysis shows that when you really will look at it from across the street, you're really going to be looking at and perceiving a lower building, given the slope of that particular roof. And so that's helpful, to help kind of mitigate the increased height here. Additionally, there's no views of the water or the beach through here. So there's no public views. So we're not impacting any view whatsoever. So again, let's look at what the site's going to be. This is from 32nd, I'm sorry, 22nd Street looking south toward the beach and there is the building in the foreground. Now, the applicant has a couple of other view simulations that we'll be showing as well. So this is here to help you show, see the scale of the building compared to its surroundings. Now, that's the building that's there on the corner. Blackies is in there, other commercial uses and residential uses on the second floor. That building is 33 feet in height, so it's very comparable in height to this building. You might also notice the single-family home down the block. That's a non-conforming, single-family home. At some point in the future, that's going to be built with a project that's going to be of similar height. So this entire block will then kind of fit within that kind of design and scale of this entire block that was built, you know, at the turn of the prior century. Okay, here is a view looking down the pedestrian alley. This is a public walkway here, an alley. This is that nine-foot alley between the buildings and you can see the building behind there. So that's Dory Deli there on the left and the Blue Beet is on the second floor above there on the right. This is a daytime rendering that the applicant architect put together. The one thing you don't see here is that little window on the alley. You really can see it on the plans on page 106 and you can see that window in the alley. That'll help the drivers see pedestrians as they come out that narrow driveway. The rendering it does that the applicant put together. The applicant can describe the materials of the building, but there are some enhanced features with stone and wood and what have you, and it really does present a very high-quality exterior and design. It is a little more modern, but again, we're in the, you know, this building obviously wasn't built, you know, 100 years ago. But we do feel that the scale of this building is appropriate for the area and its location. Talk about the commercial parking waiver. So existing conditions, there's an eight-space deficiency and the proposed, we're having a seven-space waiver. They are providing a disabled access space and that is a benefit. There isn't one today. We do feel it's appropriate for the waiver. You know, this is really not a destination use, if you will. These are small, commercial spaces. Obviously, this, these spaces will serve the folks who are in that area with whatever, visitor-serving or retail or other uses. There are real physical limitations with this particular project site. If we tried to squeeze in all those parking spaces, there would be no commercial space on the ground floor. Doing tandem parking spaces, at some point, you really wouldn't have a first floor. So you really couldn't actually achieve any kind of a mixed-use building of any size. And, you know, this is actually an issue that we do see with our mixed-use zones. The smaller the project sites get, it's almost impossible to achieve the parking requirements. And so it's a constraint and we do need to take a look at it, but we do feel it's still appropriate and we can support the parking waiver. Don't see this as a destination use where any kind of parking overflow would disrupt visitors to the coast. The parcel map is really straightforward. There are three underlying lots. We're building one building across that. It merges that into one lot, but it also creates a condominium map so that the units can be sold independently. The ground floor commercial will be under one ownership. So the coastal development permit, just to summarize, there's no public access through the site, no views through the side. The sidewalks will remain open, so there really is no impingement of access. In fact, when the project is done construction, we'll actually have a little bit better access to the alley, so that's a benefit to the public. There's no loss of street parking. There's no curb cuts involved, improves that alley access, as I mentioned, improves water quality by updating drainage and what have you. And so, you know, we do see this investment as a valuable one in the McFadden Square area and it does meet all of the standards of our LCP through this process this evening. So our recommended action is to conduct a public hearing. We do find the project is exempt. It does fall within the Class III construction of small structures. This does meet that. It also meets Class 15 minor divisions of land and so we have a resolution with the facts to support the findings and we have conditions of approval for you to consider. I do want to delete one duplicative condition and that would be condition number 12. Yes, condition number 12. It's duplicative of condition number 37, so I just want to go ahead and make that change right now. And I'm available for any questions that you might have. And the applicant is here. They do have also a presentation and they can go over the design with a little more detail for you.
Thank you. At this time, the commissioners have any questions for staff? I don't see any there. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to ex parte communications. We'll start down with Commissioner Rosin.
I met with the applicant and toured the site.
I also met with the applicant and got a tour of the site.
I toured the site and met the applicant.
I toured the site and met with the applicant.
I had a telephone call with the applicant.
I toured the site, met with the applicant to discuss the merits of the project.
Thank you. All right, we'll move ahead and open the public hearing and we'll start with the applicant. If they'd like to give their presentation.
Mr. Chair and commissioners and staff, my name is Rush Hill and I happen to be an architect. I am a consultant to the owner for program management and I happen to have the property across the street from this project. Our owner, Mr. Mario Marovic, would love to be here this evening, but due to schedule changes, he finds himself at 30,000 feet, about 10% of the way to Europe. So he has a wife and two children that they're taking on vacation and he recognizes that divorced attorneys are quite expensive. He has sent us here this evening. Brandon Architects, Ryan, is going to make the presentation this evening and following that, we'll be available to hopefully answer any questions that you may have. Ryan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rush. Chair Lowry, members of the commission, my name is Ryan McDaniel. I'm a principal architect with Brandon Architects here on behalf of our clients, Mario and Ashley Marovic. And I just wanted to start saying this is a project that we are very excited about. You know, it's not every day you get a client like Mario and Ashley. The real project directive on this was to design a long-term investment for Mario. He's very intimately involved with this particular block, which is McFadden Square. But the directive was really to design a three-unit commercial and three residential condominiums that he plans to keep. So this is a long-term investment for his family. This is not something that he has developed for profit. And as an architect, a lot of the ethos of what we look for in a mixed-use development and redevelopment, you know, we look at displacement of commercial spaces of small businesses from the beginning. Mario's been an advocate for keeping small mom-and-pop retail stores, keeping the pattern of development. And because of that, I think this project has been a great success that we're proud of and I think the community that we've reached out to has been very highly supportive of. Again, you know the site area well and I want to thank staff for their thorough report. And just touching base on the existing conditions, you know, the, our client is the current owner. He knows this area well. He knows the blights. He knows the traces of the development and how it's used. 110 22nd Street is a single-family residence, as we touched on. What's important to know is that a two-car garage that exists on that property was enclosed and has been used for storage as long as our client has owned the property. 108 22nd Street really hasn't been a very viable retail space. It's actually used for storage currently. 106 22nd Street has a marine-related retail with the bike rentals there and it has an apartment above with an uncovered parking stall. Again, abundance of public parking with our studies and our parking analysis, obviously this is an area that is highly trafficked. I would just reiterate the point that there are a lot of draws. There's a lot of destinations that draw people here and with the small mom-and-pop retail uses that are marine-related, these are really secondary destinations. Their primary business drivers are people who are coming to the beach, who might be coming to McFadden Square to a restaurant, bar, all the above, who are walking, you know, the entire stretch of the boardwalk there. As we get into the parking, I just wanted to clarify that we've always considered in our application that the single-family residence has a two-car garage, but in fact, again, that's being currently used for storage. So really, we're giving a net increase of five stalls. We've claimed three. There's no impact to public street parking. And again, we're adding the addition of a van-accessible stall. There's been certain challenges with the proposed redevelopment, which has been touched on. Number one has been the access and this existing nine-foot alley configuration. Again, voluntarily, our client from the beginning was aware of that impact as the current owner of the buildings. And so it was really his suggestion and his knowledge of the existing conditions that allowed us to propose that two-foot dedicated easement to the city to improve access to that entire alley. In addition, the trash enclosure has been touched on as well, but that will be a public benefit to the businesses, at least locally there, that don't have a adequate means of disposal or recycling. In a massing study that we've looked at, to some extent with the staff report, we're just showing some before and after images, really studying how this building's going to relate to the existing pattern of development. In this massing study, we're really looking at the existing Blackies buildings and some of those high parapets that greatly exceed the maximum flat allowable and the terracing design. But a key aspect of the design has been maintaining that pattern of the street frontage along 22nd Street, again, with smaller retail spaces and the walkability of that frontage while terracing back some of the two, second and third stories to provide relief in that massing. Looking at this from the beach and the Blackies perspective, it's clear that the terracing and perspective really mitigates some of the impacts of the height when related to the property line, the street. It is, the highest point of that eve is about two feet higher than that flat parapet that you see of the Blackies building, but it's generally perceived at or lower than that and therefore we feel compatible with the area. Looking from Balboa towards the beach, again, we see some of the impacts of the pattern of development where there's two stories or more right at the property line. Again, these are zero setback lot line developments. As we layer in our massing, we're actually seeing some relief to that street frontage as opposed to building a two-story right along the property line. The height exhibit has shown in our studies that when you're on the, you know, property line, the sidewalk there, the way that we've terraced the building, you're really not going to even see the highest points of the roof. In fact, when you're across the street, you will not perceive the highest ridge lines just given the cone of sight and the line of that front eve line. Even as you go back into the assigned parking at 115 22nd Street, which is about 115 feet away from our highest ridge, it's still not visible from that point. So again, with our height going taller, setting that massing back 20 foot seven and a half in the diagram that we're showing here, it provides a tremendous amount of relief of that massing as it's viewed from the different public manage points. Again, this is a product that we're very proud of. We sport a lot of intention into designing something that will revitalize a somewhat underdeveloped area of 22nd Street. This is something that we hope the community can be proud of. It is something that we have submitted in a conceptual level. We have won several design awards, but just in looking through the renderings, again, you're seeing some of the key features of articulating a podium that's reinforcing the street frontage and the single-story, small retail aspect of the development. As we terrace back into the residential units, there's a large, central, open-air atrium at the core of the massing, which also provides light air and a lot of relief to what's being proposed. At this time, we'll open up for any questions or comments that you might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yes.
I commend you on your presentation on the renderings. I mean, it's well-designed. Got a question. The one rendering, yeah, there it is. You see the palm trees next door to the beachside? Is the sidewalk, I believe, is seven and a half feet or nine? Nine, I think. Nine feet in front of this? I couldn't read it as clearly as I could eight years ago. It's seven foot seven or six. My question is, is there room in front of this to continue that line of a couple of tall palm trees? If you notice, they're in the area and it kind of identifies it.
That's a great question. I think something that we would need to study probably further with the city, you know, that goes outside of our property line and what they would, you know, encourage from that standpoint.
All right. Fair answer. Thank you.
I just have one quick question. With an approval tonight, wouldn't you plan to break ground or commence construction? Is there a timeline?
Yes, the goal would be to break ground in fall after the busy summer season.
That was my, yeah, that's what I figured would be a lot more convenient after Labor Day.
As the crowds disappear. The logistics of the site are...
Yeah. Makes a lot of sense. Okay. All right. Commissioner Rosin?
This is a great design. I enjoyed trying to figure it out and enjoyed, you know, visiting the site and seeing how you really put this together is pretty, it's pretty cool. But my question actually relates to, because there's a lot of comments about trash in here and I was trying to understand, does the residential component use those trash bins as well? I was looking for a residential trash facility and I couldn't find one, so I think it must be the bins.
Yes, the shared trash enclosure would be a shared trash resource for basically the entire alley.
For everybody.
Right.
Okay. That was my question.
My question? Okay.
Could you put up that cross-section you showed? Because I couldn't figure out what this was. There. What is that midway back in the building line? Why is, why did you drop down? Is that like a basement or?
That was a, that's an elevator pit. Probably unrelated to that section, but there will be an elevator pit.
No, it probably relates to further in the building. All right, you answered it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you might have more questions towards the end. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and take additional public comments on this item. Feel free to come on up.
Good evening, Chair Lowry and fellow planning commissioners. I'm Steve Rozansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. And I'm just here to express our support for this project. I probably met Mr. Marovic twelve, fifteen years ago when I was on City Council and he bought the Malarkies property there on Newport Boulevard. And from that time on, the only thing that I've seen he's done is improved whatever he's touched. And I think that you, as you've expressed and we've seen here tonight, he's intending to improve these three properties, upgrade the housing stock in the neighborhood, upgrade the commercial stock of the neighborhood, revitalize several properties that are clearly, you know, tired and past their useful life. I think, as they pointed out, that expanding the alleyway there, the dedication, the trash enclosures, those are great improvements for not just his property, but for all the properties in the area. The consolidation of the, of the lots to create a more efficient use of the property, I think, is important here. And, you know, I would just say that, you know, this is a no-brainer pretty much. So I sincerely hope you will approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Andy Fatlali and I own a home on the peninsula, specifically on Bay Island. I've got three small children. We spend quite a bit of time at, at Blackies Beach, take my kids surfing. And I just wanted to speak in favor of this project. This is something that I think McFadden really needs. Beautifies the neighborhood and the community and, you know, quite frankly, someone that's making this type of investment into the community, I think, is going to encourage further investment into the community. And I'm definitely for it. So wanted to show my support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Kyle Hanson. I'm the founder and president of Recycle for Veterans nonprofit. Our mission is to remove trash from our planet by empowering veterans to clean our communities such as Newport Beach. I believe this project is not only going to, you know, bring a lot of value to the community, but also speaking on behalf of what Mario's done for the veteran community, not only in Newport, but Orange County. Mario has helped put on multiple beach cleanups that involve veterans reconnecting with Newport Beach and the businesses there. Mario's also provided opportunities where we're trying to prevent the twenty-two a day, which is the twenty-two veteran suicide. He's provided over with sixteen hundred applicants in our organization have attended events that Mario has supported and ultimately gave them an opportunity to come to an establishment where they could get together and bring that camaraderie back that they once had when we served. I truly think this project is beautiful. It's only going to bring value to the community like other actions Mario's done. I hope you move forward with this project and thank you for having me.
Thank you. Maybe the applicant would mind bringing up the materials board and we'll take a look up here while we, looks like we finish up the public comments. Thank you. Start down here with Eric. Thank you. All right. Any other further public comments?
Good evening, Chair Lowry and the Planning Commission. My name is Austin Edsel. I work in Newport Beach for the applicant, Mr. Marovic. As some of you may know, Mr. Marovic is an upstanding and outstanding operator in the area. And this is a clean and wonderful project for the McFadden area. I help manage some of these properties and I can't tell you enough, this is going to be an absolutely amazing project. So I am speaking tonight, asking you to approve the project and I thank you for your time and attention.
All right, thank you. Any other further comments? Doesn't look like there's any. I'll ask the applicant just one more question. Are you good with the conditions that are in the resolution? And it looks like we may take out twelve just for, because it's a duplicate, but otherwise the conditions are satisfactory?
We are.
All right.
He is.
Thank you.
He will.
All right, well, it looks like we'll go ahead and just, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment section of the meeting and we'll bring it back up here with the commissioners on any other further questions from staff or discussion amongst ourselves, resolution, other question?
Yeah, I'm happy to support it. On my time that I visited the property, I got a nice tour and that area down there is a mess. And there's, Commissioner Kettin, you'll appreciate this because trash enclosures seem to be your passion for the last eight years. But their trash enclosures are everywhere. Other businesses have to rely on figuring it out and it's just kind of a madhouse down there. So the fact that this kind of coordinates all that, we're not going to find a better property owner that's going to take three properties and combine them and make this all work and work for that area. The fact they're giving back two feet on the alley space, I mean, I don't know how any car gets through there, let alone the trash guys that have to remove the trash from those enclosures. But this will help that, this will help our public safety getting in that area. So I think this is a great project for the community and especially for that area. So I'm, I'm happy to support it and make a motion to approve the item with the conditions as is.
Any other comments or a second?
I too echo what Commissioner Wagen just communicated. I, I really do appreciate the design. I think that the applicant put a lot of, and the architect put a lot of time and it's actually a very thoughtful design with a very constrained area. I like how it tears back to the extent that the single-family residence is going to be redeveloped down the road and it's going to go up. They're not going to be looking at their curtain walls side by side. So I think that for all the reasons that have been echoed and for this great design, I'm going to be supportive.
Mr. Chair, again, I think that the design is outstanding. I've got some notes here. I understand the owners are going to live on the third floor, which gives it even more pride of ownership. The additional trash, as we've all spoken and heard, is tremendous for that community right there. They need it. I like the fact you designed covered parking in the back. I mean, it's functional and it's great. The two-foot alley dedication, there's something I spotted in here that on retail suite one, you designed a radius wall in there at the back, which is very considerate for cars trying to make, instead of making a right turn, they're radius, very clever. And lastly, the recessed front doors to the retail reminds me of the old community, old style of retail. I can support this very well.
Any other comments or questions or a second down? Okay. Any questions? Okay.
I'll, I'll second the project though, for sure.
And your motion includes striking twelve.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, congratulations. It'll be a beautiful project there. A lot of good work. All right, we'll just go ahead and move on to section nine here on our staff and commissioner items and we will go, are there any motions for reconsiderations? No, I, I'll ask Alonda. Do we need to open up public at all for the, since we postponed item number five? Is that?
It is not necessary. We're not continuing it. We will just renotice it at the appropriate date and time.
All right, great. Then we'll just go ahead and move on to item number six, motion for reconsideration. Seeing none, we'll move on to seven. The only thing really here is if any commissioner would like to place anything on the agenda for future? Seeing none. Any requests for excused absences with summer coming up? Looks like none. So we are going to adjourn at seven-twenty-eight, seven-twenty-eight, yes.
And Chairman, don't forget, I'm still on the commission until the end of the month and I can still stir the pot a little bit.
Okay, is there any special meetings called or anything like that? Well, we'll get all noticed. Yes.